... projects. And so for the fiscal about 23 year, that totaled about 680,000 dollars. So the question is with those results in the year for our general fund fund balance, how did we get there? You can see your general fund revenues for the year were almost 115 million. That was about a $6 million dollar increase from where you were in '22 and you were almost $9 million over what you had budgeted. And if you compare that to where you were expenditure wise, your expenditures were about 101 million. You can see about 11% increase from the prior year and you were actually under what you had budgeted for the year. But the additional thing that brings you to a slight loss for the year is that there were quite a few transfers out of general fund, but we have some objections right at the time. As far as couple of the other major funds that are out there that are separated in your financial statements. One is your capital projects fund. You can see about $78 million in fund balance. And you can see how that's broken down to what's restricted and committed. And then your hospitality tax fund, the local hospitality taxes, about five and a half million in fund balance. And you can see how that's broken down as well as the service. The other part of the audit, and I'll talk about the audit itself in just a minute here. But the other part of the audit that I like to mention is the, what we call the compliance audit. And because the city receives a significant amount of federal funds every year, 23 year end, it was about over $3 million. The federal government asked us to look at some of your more major programs, make sure you're complying with the various requirements. The two programs that we looked at this year were CDVG and then the HOPA programs. If we had any compliance issues, we would be talking about some findings, some significant efficiency, et cetera. There were none. The cities, in looking at these programs this year, the city doing a very good job in terms of staying compliant with, with a lot of different requirements that are out there. The other letter that you will receive, the final from us along with the financial statements, is a management letter that we present to council. And it's basically some required communications from us to you and to management. If, again, if there were any significant issues that you felt like needed to be addressed, they'd be included in my presentation. There weren't any. It's just kind of some of the regular communications that we need to send to you as part of our budget. So let's talk about the audit itself for just a minute. When you look at the financial statements, there are two things I like to remind you. One is that those statements themselves, that's the city's responsibility. That's why you have the staff that you have. Day to day, there are a lot of activity, a lot of transactions going on that result in what you see in financial statements. But the other part of it that we don't always think about all the time that to us is just as important is the internal controls, processes, and procedures that are behind the scenes. And though making sure that those were effective, that's operating the way they were designed, working the way everybody wants them to, is really important. And one of the things that your finance, frankly, I think probably staff across the city do, is that's really important, is what we call risk assessment. And that's just constantly asking ourselves, you know, do we have some risk somewhere that's a little higher than we'd like for? How can we address that? And doing that constant assessment is really important, even though it's all happening behind the scenes and you don't necessarily see it. So having said that, then, what you then ask us to do is to perform our audit. The end result of our audit is just the opinion that we issue. And, and I want to stop and mention that, I know this is a very brief overview presentation, and you see the financial statements, but I want to go ahead and say that a lot of time and effort goes into putting all this together, especially by your staff. So I've got it in the next slide, but I want to go ahead and mention while I talk to you about the audit, that you have a really good finance staff. And I want to tell Patricia, Erin, and Chris, thank you for all of the hard work. And the rest of the team, they've got a great team behind them that are taking care of a lot of things as well. So with that, once they've closed everything out, they're ready for us, we come in and perform our audit. The end result is that opinion that we issue. And in essence, all we're doing is performing enough work for us to be able to issue an opinion that says what's in these financial statements is materially correct. So I am happy to tell you that for the year ended, June 30, 2023, the city has received an unmodified opinion. I know that doesn't mean anything to anybody. That's as good as it gets. You cannot receive a better opinion than a clean, unmodified opinion. So council and, and city manager and staff ought to be very pleased with that. And that, again, is a testament to the staff that you have. So having said that, kind of come back and overview, you've got that unmodified opinion for the last year end. Your financial condition is still very healthy. And I wanted to point out that the GFOA is what's called the Government Finance Officer Association. It is a national organization that really provides, works with local governments all around the country. And they have three different programs that local governments can participate in if they want to. You can see that the city continues and has for a while now received the award for the budget presentation, for the financial reporting, as well as for the popular annual financial reporting. And, and just to, the thing that jumps out to me when you see this is, this is the only client that we have in South Carolina that actually receives all three of these awards. There's a lot that must receive one or two, but to receive all three really says something about the city of Greenville, about your staff. So congratulations. And with that, that's it for me. I'll be glad to answer any questions. If anybody has any questions.
I know, you're surprised. I'm just, if you go back two or three slides where you talk about CDVG and HOPA.
Yep.
Is that random, those two that you pick? Or you said it, you implied it changes each year?
Well, it does. What, what we have to do is we have to select enough programs that cover at least 20% of your total federal expenditures if you're all over $3 billion. And what tends to happen is you've got about three or four programs, depending on the year, that will tend to give us enough coverage. DOJ is sometimes one that we look at in addition to these two. The ARCA funds are another good example. So some, they somewhat rotate, but if you look at it over two to three years, they'll be pretty consistent.
That concludes my questions.
Hey, good. All right. Anybody have any questions for that?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Thank you so much. Now, ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Senator agenda, do we have a motion?
Moved.
It moved proper second. Quick call roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Aye. Motion approved. You're down to number 14, you're going to 12 and 13. Senator, I'm finished with our regular agenda. 14.
An ordinance to appropriate $564,700 in contributions from the Greenville Zoo Foundation and the Greenville Zoo Fund for the construction of a new Africa class.
Move.
Quick call roll. Quick. Would you like to go there? Quick call roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Brazington. Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow. At the same, Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Aye. I have a pass. 14A and 14B.
An ordinance submitting Chapter 8 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Greenville, Sections 8-2 and 8-280, and repealing and replacing Appendixes A and B in order to update the class schedule as required by Act 176 of 2020.
Mayor, I, I move that we defer this item until the December 11th meeting.
Second.
Just second. Okay. The move proper second, that we defer this item. They won't have any objection. All of the favor, the turn is there.
Aye.
Aye.
We defer item 14B. They go to item 50.
An ordinance to appropriate $15,000 in miscellaneous grant fund for the FY 2023 South Carolina State Homeland Security Grant Program.
Second.
Quick with all roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington. Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Aye. The staff is excited because y'all approved and they didn't get a chance to say anything. It's okay. We're taking. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we have no problem receiving money. All right, item 15B.
An ordinance to rezone approximately 3.479 acres of real property located at North Pleasantburg Drive and Lounsville Road from RC 3 to MX 3.
Second, and I do want to get a presentation.
All right.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tim and council, this is a request to rezone about three and a half acres at the corner of Lounsville Road and North Pleasantburg Drive to MX 3 to facilitate a new office development by a local development company.
Any questions?
I do. I just want to go, can we go back to the slide that showed all the trees? All right, the same property owner owns this whole parcel that's RC 3.
Correct.
Okay. And so we're splitting it and zoning the front part, the front part, the front, frontage Pleasantburg to MX 3, keeping the balances RC 3.
The whole area in the green boundary is three parcels and all of those are being rezoned from RC 3 to MX 3 for the office. And then behind that will stay RC 3 for multifamily, apartment apartments.
So do we have, do we have indications that both of those projects are a go and they'll be silent pending hits? Or just kind of get the vision of the whole lot as adults from that?
Yes, they wanted to proceed with this, so they were ready to do for one project.
Are they gonna, do we know if they're going to do, do the, do the frontage one first and then the apartments come later? Is this all one thing?
The, the apartments were approved last year, so as far as we know, they're ready to report on those returns.
Okay. Was this parcel purchased after June 30 of 2021? In which case, the pre-ordinance will apply.
I believe it was after 2021.
Okay, double check that.
Yeah.
It either was or it wasn't, but it's a lot of trees.
Okay, thanks.
Any other question? Now, that means that moves for federal, for, now that's, those are free fish. I don't know about that. So thank you so much. I appreciate it.
But I didn't think it would be helpful with what you find out, what we made that actually should be counted by me. And I will say, Mary Douglas, since you, since now I see what, and I'm sure there are great pictures that show this, but this to me is a trigger capitalist type project, the office facing Pleasantburg under the new code, forward facing, not a parking lot. Fair statement. Obviously, I haven't seen any artist renderings, but this is the first example along North Pleasantburg where I believe there's tremendous room for improvement, but that's just my opinion, in a four-phase design that I really look at.
And, and, and Clayton will tell you that the DOT is planning on repaving North Pleasantburg. I don't know if it goes down as far as Lounsville, but that's okay. We'll take it what they're going to get, right? Is that correct?
That's correct. We start.
And goes up, so much needed repaving jobs.
It'd be great if all that was timed well together, but that's just, that's just a dream.
Oh, baby, keep dreaming. Maybe one day you will have. Quick call roll. Excited.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Brazington. Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Aye. Item 15 will be passed. Item 15.
An ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 42, Article 3 of Division 3 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Greenville regarding permit parking districts.
Second, and I do have one question. Kramer. All right, we talked a little bit about this before, but the way this would work is a community, because it's a massive, a community decides they want to afford parking permits immediately. A geography is defined and a petition must be signed by 75% of the residents with one, one vote per household, is what I read. But explain to me, they can, they can define their own geography, which makes it different from traffic calm?
Yes, that, that's correct. So they would submit a petition request. They would submit the streets if they would like to be in that district. The city would then do a survey. So on the parking team, the engineer folks, and then do a long-term assessment, find everything, make sure that it, that it is squared away. And then they would then establish the district that.
Okay. And right now, we have the, those, for example, are the pedigree district. The prime example I can think of, I'm not sure there are others, I just can't think of right now.
Yeah. What, what happens if a house is split? What, what happens if a house is split? I'm digressing. The question is this. That's speaking from experience, that's for sure.
It's sunny weather.
I can't, sunny weather's much.
It's good, you're over the way.
The, the boundaries, are they, is there, and probably the ordinance, I'm sorry, I read this, not today. And, but is there, do the boundaries have to be at intersections, or can they just be in a house?
No, it doesn't have to be intersection. So, typically, streets, city-owned streets, has to be a minimum of 20 spaces available, parking spaces on that street, and that's the minimum threshold.
Okay. Okay, so you can stop at a property line, not necessarily an intersection?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be intersection.
Any other questions? Let's call roll on this.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Aye. Item 15C passed, so we have got. Okay, how would we use this information out to our communities about the parking permits? Hopefully, you'll get on this, because this is, this is a new, that you got, but it's another chat.
Yes, our public engagement manager, Wesley Fletcher, will help us with that.
Oh, yes, thank you. I do.
He gave me the thumbs up.
All right, thank you.
We might also, do we have that on the end for the paper president's luncheon? We can do it as part of our announcements. I would include it in that.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate that. Next, new business resolution, first and final reading.
Item 16A, resolution to approve a naming opportunity agreement with Craig and Vicki Brown for the ballfield at Unity Park.
Okay, anybody have any question, comments? Vicki and Craig are not here tonight, that's fine. All of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You want to close? Thank you, Frank, you stayed there waiting patiently.
We knew we were gonna say something.
Yeah, it gets to sound time, but they're gone. Item 16B.
Resolution to consider amending the Greenville Development Code to clarify distinctions between residential use categories and provide additional definitions related thereto.
Okay, good. Okay. Then move properly second question. Oh, good. Oh, good timing. So, if you don't have a deal, there you go. There you have it, all right. All of the favor of item 16B, please say aye.
Aye.
No other question? If not, made it or not, and city manager, staff before, then the other thing?
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to, once again, thank our O M B staff, all of our O M B staff for their hard work through the audit. It is a tremendous amount of time that they have to dedicate time. They spend a lot of time making sure that we stay in a very healthy financial state for our community, and we're very grateful for that. And so, please join me again in thanking the entire O M B team for their work. And one of our other great teams has a very exciting week this week with our P R P theme, because we have lots of holiday happening starting this week. And so, all the fun begins Friday, so I hope you all have everything on your calendars. And it's gonna be a fun month and a lot of exciting things happening this next month. So, please come out and join us. We start with tree lighting on Friday, May, and then we have a parade on Saturday, and then a lot of other things between now and the end of December. So, we're just excited for all of our five minutes of activity this week and throughout the month. So, please come out and enjoy our community during this time.
Oh, great. Any other announcements or more? They would get, so, okay. If not, thank you. We look forward to seeing everybody when we have our next party on December 11th. All right, all of the favor, all right.
Thanks, I can't hear you.